They're all the same.
You may have to hold on. None of them will.
Just hold the button. I think that might work.
Here's a better... How about this?
Testing. Call the meeting to order at 5:36. Okay, roll call. We have Mr. Buffalo present, Mr. Reeves president, Mr. Adams president, and Ms. Harvey president, and myself, Barbara Gaines, present. Good afternoon. The board properly placed a discipline dismissal release matter on its closed session agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 subdivision B1, which is part of the Brown Act. Also pursuant to that section, the employee in question was given prior written notice that this matter had been placed on the closed session agenda of today's board meeting and an opportunity to request that the matter instead be heard in open session. The employee is requesting that the board hear this matter in open session. Therefore, we will hear this matter at this time. Before we begin, I will take a few minutes to explain the process that we will use to conduct this open session item. Under the Brown Act, an employee may request the board hear complaints and charges in open session. When an employee makes such a request, we are required to hear a matter in open session, which we would otherwise have heard in closed session. We will proceed as follows. First, the board will hear from the administration on the factual basis for the district's recommendation in open session. Second, Mr. Gang or his representative will have the opportunity to speak. Third, the board will ask for any other public comment on a closed session item. Any member of the public wishing to comment on this matter may speak at this time, subject to the usual rules and time constraints for public comment. The board will then adjourn to closed session to deliberate. The board will consider the information and what if any action to take in closed session. The board will report out its actions at the appropriate time. Open session. Proceeding. Dr. Zalit, please proceed.
I'm recommending that Mr. Gang be released from his contract because I've lost confidence in his ability to serve as an educational administrator due to a series of complaints against him and Mr. Gang engaging in a pattern of misconduct.
Mr. Gang, would you like to address the board? Please begin.
Are you able to hear the interpreter? Are you able to hear this?
No.
Can you hear it with the microphone that I currently am holding?
Yes, I can hear the current speaker. I cannot hear the gentleman on screen.
Okay.
I'll repeat myself. I don't believe that airing your dirty laundry in public is good at all. I was sent an email today asking if I want to have this in open session. Yes or no? A yes or no question. Not would you rather have this in open session or closed session? It was a yes or no question. So I answered the question because I felt it was necessary. I felt if I said no, it wouldn't be an open session, and I would be left hanging. Regards to the comments made by Dr. Zalit. It's a very sad, sad time. Very sad time in the sense that I went from being a valued member to this institution for six years, five and a half years, valued member, standing in front of this board telling you about all the accomplishments we've had in athletics, talking about all the wonderful things we've done in athletics, talking about the things that we have going on. Alderby pulled away on February 3rd. On March 31st, I was called into my supervisor, Mr. Howard Davis's office. Mr. Howard Davis said to me, "When we hire a football coach, you're not going to be involved in the hiring process." Taken aback, I was, because this isn't the first time Mr. Davis called me into his office throughout this investigation that I reported early in the year. It wasn't the first time. On three different occasions, Mr. Davis called me into his office and said, "Hey, you need to stop talking about this investigation." I said, "What are you talking about? You need to stop talking about..." Where does that come from? If there's an accusation being made, why isn't it being addressed with me? It wasn't addressed with me. Not by the president, not by Mr. Davis, or not by Ms. Cook. Another instance, I send an email to Ms. Cook, who I've had an open line of communication my entire time here, and I can prove that. And I have evidence of that, asking her about the progress of the investigation that you all know about. I got a text message at 6 o'clock in the morning from Mr. Davis. When I called him right back, Mr. Davis said to me, "I guess I didn't make myself clear. You only address me with regards to this issue." I said, "I don't know what you're talking about. I've always had an open line of communication, but I'll follow that direction." So I did. Called in once again. "Hey, there's word that this is happening." Mr. Davis tells me once again, "Quit talking about the investigation." I said, "I haven't talked about the investigation with anybody." There is a lot of conjecture out there. There's a lot of rumors, and there's a lot of people creating false negatives and false narratives. It had nothing to do with me. And I told Mr. Davis that. Very discouraged. The way this investigation was handled, at first Ms. Cook scheduled a meeting the first time, the second time she rushed to schedule a meeting. After that, the investigator started contacting me himself on Sundays. I have emails for that. I have calendar invites from the investigator. The way that this was handled was very, very concerning to me. At one point, when I was on a call with the investigator, he was asking about other individuals in my division. He was asking about personal things about individuals in the division that I didn't feel comfortable with. So I texted Mr. Davis, my immediate supervisor, because I was told that's what I do. Mr. Davis said, "You're on the call with the investigator now?" I said, "Yeah, and I'm very uncomfortable with the questions he's asking." Do you know what he responded? Nothing. He didn't respond to anything. He just left me hanging. And the investigator asked for documents. I said, "Do I need to send these through Megan?" Because typically, when I had documents, I had to send them to Megan. No direction from Howard. I've been put on notice. I can't contact Ms. Cook. And I can... I have documents on all this. I have text messages on all this. I was left hanging. So when we get to the March 31st meeting, and he says that to me, it didn't sit right. How come you keep coming at me without asking me questions? How come I have to deal with this investigator and an outside investigation without having support from the college? I didn't contact Dr. Zalit and tell her because I was told I'm not supposed to do that. I followed the procedure. So I go the next day, and I request a meeting with Mr. Davis. I say to Mr. Davis, "Howard, I don't feel comfortable with this. What's the context of all of these times you're talking to me? What's the context in this?" I said, "Is it Ms. Cook? Is it Dr. Zalit coming to you saying, 'Hey, tell Tom this, tell Tom that, tell Tom that? I'm not involved in any conversations above that.'" I asked him the context, and he... I said, "Is this Ms. Cook saying this? Tell Tommy he's not going to be involved in the hiring process?" He said, "Yes." He also says, "On those other occasions where I was being told..." He said, "Those came from Ms. Cook." Not a conversation. Not a, "Hey, let's sit down and talk about what's being said. Let's try to work through this." No. And on that day when I spoke to Mr. Davis on February 1st, I said to him, "Howard, this is really concerning to me. There are some things that are off the rails here. This investigation is... It's crazy." I also said, "I'm really concerned that we have no access to Ms. Cook or no access to Dr. Zalit." We had a dean's meeting where we had one dean using the F-word, throwing it around like it's nothing, saying, "If you have a problem with me, you come see me face-to-face, F this, F that." I said, "Howard, I'm concerned about that. You didn't stop that." We had a professor yell at one of our coaches about white privilege, videotaped by student athletes. The same individual yelled at me, said, "I'm using my white privilege, my size privilege." I said, "I'm not using size privilege. I'm using administrator privilege. You need to leave the class. There's some serious things." And I brought this up to Mr. Davis. I said to him, I said, "I have concerns with what's going on. Please, make the president aware." After that meeting, I left. I texted Mr. Davis. I said, "Howard, thank you for listening to me." I have that on my text message. "I really hope you convey my concerns to the president. As always, I will do what I'm directed to do." Two days later, I'm called in on Friday afternoon at noon, February 3rd. Ms. Cook informs to me that she's done an investigation. She has evidence. Terminate me with cause and would like my resignation, or I have the opportunity to resign. I said, "I don't understand. Where's this coming from?" She says, "Well, the termination is because of the ongoing investigation with the previous employee. You should have known about it." And she had some things in there that were incorrect. And I understand that. She doesn't have a grasp on all the California Community College Athletics Association rules. I get that. She had a couple other things in there that I have text messages showing that they weren't true. I have emails on everything, but I don't have access to my emails to defend myself. I just wanted somebody to talk to me. So Ms. Cook said, "We're going to have a marathon... We're going to have a marathon meeting on Monday." Marathon meeting. But I've already got enough evidence here. I've already got enough evidence here. Because you know, I'm pretty concerned. So as Dr. Zalit has advised us all to do, I have members of my mentorship group that I reached out to. And every single one of them, when I gave them the entire story, said, "Hey, you might want to find some representation." And you know, nobody here would listen to me. Nobody here even wanted to talk to me. I'm being told I'm being terminated after six years, or I will be recommended for termination. After six good years and six hard years, and I'm supposed to walk away with a resignation. My humility in this matter has been demonstrated. But I believe that people use my humility and see it as weakness. It's not weakness. I know who I am, and I'm comfortable with who I am. So I didn't feel comfortable going to a meeting with Ms. Cook on a Monday, because that was the plan, marathon meeting on Monday. But she's already got enough evidence. So I reached out to try to find some counsel, as my mentors told me to. And you know what? I found somebody that would listen to me. The Parrish Law Firm listened to me. And let me tell you this about the Parrish Law Firm. They didn't say, "Oh, yeah, we're going to do the... We got your back, Tom." No. I sat hours upon hours with three different people in that firm, showing them every text message that I have, showing them every document that I have, showing them every email that I have. And they agreed that, "Hey, there's something fishy going on." I come from the world of athletics. You guys know that about me. Coach at the Division One level, coach at junior calls level, coach at most all levels. And I understand that when a new head coach comes in, a head coach might want to bring their own staff in. I get that. If Dr. Zalit sat me down and said, "Hey, Tom, I think I want to go in a different direction. She's administrator," I probably would have walked away. I would have gotten another job. But they took away my ability to do that. There are over 2 million students in the state of California Community College. There's only 110 athletic directors in the state. And I can speak, or I probably know 90% of those athletic directors. Small world. Small world. So when I'm being told I'm going to be recommended for termination for cause, or I can resign, and I'm placed on leave, I'm the president of the Southern California Football Association. Effective immediately on my leave, I'm no longer the president of SCFA. That rumor spreads fast. I'm on the California Athletic Directors Association Executive Board. They're placing me on leave. That rumor spreads fast. I've been effectively taken away and taken out my opportunity to finish and retire in the California Community College system. Because what appears to me wasn't even given an opportunity. I still, as I stand here before you today, I still don't have an idea of what all this stuff is about. Dr. Zalit sent me a letter in regard to dishonesty. Dr. Zalit sent me a letter saying that I assisted in falsification of documents, that I was abusive to employees, that I somehow discriminated against employees or discriminated in hiring practices against employees. Ms. Cook, on the day that I was told I was going to be left, she said it in regard to a young coach by the name of Milton Knox. Milton Knox was encouraged to apply here. I encouraged Milton to apply here. Milton Knox, a young man, misunderstood and felt that he should be the interim head coach, and I told him, "I cannot assign you that job right now." I have a text message once again, as I showed everybody before. It was a misunderstanding. And he said, "Oh, I understand, coach. I understand." When Howard Davis said, "We're going to... We hired a new football coach. You're not going to be involved." I said, "Well, I don't have any idea what that's about." "Well, we don't want to give the perception that you, you know, had some backdoor deal going on." Backdoor deal? I said, "Howard, I can show you 20 emails where I tell coaches, 'Hey, there's no job open. Keep an eye out for the website if there's a job open.'" I got text messages from good friends who coach. And I tell them, "Hey, the job's not open. If the job opens, it'll be posted." I'm not going to hire... I'm not going to hire somebody and say, "You're going to be the interim head coach." Those of you who know me know that's not how I work. The athletic department on the Antelope Valley College campus is one of the most diverse groups on campus. And I had a hand in hiring the majority of every one of those coaches. People of color, people of different religions, socioeconomic backgrounds, everything. So to have the accusation be made without even being talked to? Where does that... Leadership's tough. Gosh, leadership is hard, especially in athletics. Comes at you in all directions. Parents, disgruntled coaches, disgruntled student athletes. Comes at you from all directions. You have to be strong in dealing with that. And at times, you bother people. At times, the decisions you make aren't always liked. But when that leadership, you have contact, communicate with, you talk to somebody. If you're going to ruin their career, have a conversation. Get their side of the story. Everything that's going to be said to you tonight, I'm sure in closed session, everything that's going to be presented to you by Ms. Cook from a so-called investigation, or everything that Dr. Zalit is going to say is a one-sided issue. Nobody's talked to me. Nobody's asked me about any of this stuff. How does that work? It's unfortunate. I love this college. That day when I walked out of Howard Davis's office, I said to Howard, "If I look for another job and I use you as a reference..." Could I use you as a reference? He said, "Absolutely, Tom. Absolutely." The day that I was put on... Or the day that I met with Ms. Cook and was put on leave, I sat in my car because I couldn't drive. I was taken aback. This has crushed me. I spent the last three weeks in and out of the hospital. I had a mini-heart attack because of all the anxiety and stress. Howard Davis was walking out. You know what he said to me? "I'm sorry, Tom. Sorry this happened." Members of this leadership group, members of Dr. Zalit's executive team have reached out to me saying, "I'm sorry this has happened." Not regular management, members of the leadership group, because they know the person that I am, just as a lot of you up here know the person that I am. I'm a man of integrity. I've got a hard work ethic. You know that. You've seen me work. It's sad. Absolutely sad that I can't have a conversation. One conversation. Now, I'm sure Ms. Cook will go in there in that meeting, and she'll say, "I gave him the opportunity to talk. But when I brought my lawyer," you could tell she was visibly not happy about that. Not only was she visibly not happy about that, when we were leaving, and I got up quietly because we wanted to tape that conversation. What's wrong with taping a conversation? For transparency. She said, "Absolutely not. We're not going to tape this conversation. This meeting is over." We got up to walk out, and she disparaged my attorney's family. She says to my attorney, "This is why nobody trusts your family. This is why nobody trusts your family." And then when he showed up to another meeting, she winked at him when he walked in. This is a game. This is a game.
Mr. Gang, would you please wrap up?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
I love Antelope Valley College. I have no doubt, whatever decision you make tonight, the truth will come out. No doubt. Please, do your diligence. Make sure that every side is heard. That's all I ask. I'm not perfect, and I don't think I'm perfect, but at least given an opportunity. I believe that what I would like, like to be able to go back to work. I don't have any ill will towards Antelope Valley College. I love this college. I want to go back to work. I don't have any ill will for Dr. Zalit. I don't have any ill will for Mr. Davis. I think I don't agree with everything that's being done, but I want to go back to work. And if that's not done, I'm not going to walk away. I just won't. Because what's right is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gang. The board may now ask any clarifying questions. We will start... Does any of the board members, first of all, have a clarifying question for Mr. Gang? Okay. I will take that as a no. We will now hear public comment, if any, on this matter before adjourning to closed session. Is there any public comment on this matter? Having heard none, the board will deliberate on this matter in closed session. Thank you.
I made this go off. Did I? When I plugged this in.
Do we need it?
Well, I want to make sure. Working now. But this one? Plug working, but that's not on. The plug working, but that for whatever reason, monitor.
Mark?
I bumped into. It says on charge. Now it says on on battery. We can look up there. Yeah. No, it's charging. We can look up there. We can look up there. Or maybe that's.
Let us know when you're ready, okay?
I didn't even see that.
Okay.
We're going to reconvene to public session at six fifty-one. We have everyone present, including Corey. Welcome, Corey. Comment announcement. Pursuant to Board Policy Number twenty-three fifty, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person or thirty minutes per topic. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom, from the Recording Secretary, or online. We ask that all speakers come to the podium to address the board. Ms. Harvey, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand and place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have an approval of meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Have open forum on non-agenda items, and we have one speaker. I'd like to call to the podium Eugene Hernandez.
Thank you very much. I've been invited to attend this meeting by Dr. Jose Rivera. I would like to thank Dr. Zellet, Dr. Bowen, Ms. Ford from the Classified Unions, the entire board, and student for allowing Cesar Chavez to be a holiday on this campus. Dr. Rivera asked me to say a few words regarding farmworkers, and I'd like to state that Cesar Chavez was a Johnny come lately to the organizing of farmworkers. In nineteen thirteen, at the Duris Ranch up north, they asked for three thousand farmworkers to come to that ranch. The farm owner only needed a thousand. He had projected twenty cents as the prevailing wage. Immediately when he had his thousand members, he cut that in half. So a riot ensued in which the district attorney and the sheriff was killed, and two farmworkers were killed. They tried the leaders of the IWW, the Wobblies, for starting the riot, even though they weren't even there. And these men got twenty years in prison because there was a law on California books called criminal syndicalism, which meant that you could be sent to prison for organizing unions. In nineteen thirty-three, the Communist Party under the Agriculture Workers Union organized Mexican cotton pickers in the San Joaquin Valley. Twenty thousand went out on strike. The California Highway Patrol would patrol with machine guns to intimidate the workers. The white owners of cotton pickers, of the cotton ranches, got together with vigilantes and the American Legion, which was famous for breaking up strikes, and they shot into a crowd of workers in Pixley, California, up here, and they killed two workers. And nevertheless, these workers were very militant. In nineteen seventy-two, when the United Farmworkers, Cesar Chavez called a union strike, the Teamsters Union went out to break the strike, and two farmworkers were killed. One right over here in Arvin, California, and they were successful in that strike. So the history of farmworker organizing goes back past the century, and Cesar Chavez was the latest one. But actually, the Filipinos were the ones who were more militant, who initiated the strikes, and who were independent for a while of the United Farmworkers until they joined together. But nevertheless, I'm glad that you're celebrating the birthday of Cesar Chavez, and I thank you, and I thank the campus unions and board trustees and the student trustees for acknowledging this. Thank you very much.
At this time, we have two presentations by our Vice President of Administrative Services, Mr. Shami Brar. First will be Auxiliary Services Update.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zellet, student board member. Tonight, I'm presenting the Auxiliary Services Update. The focus of tonight's presentation will be the cafeteria opening. Gaines' Nazapac facility staff and staff throughout the district have worked hard to ensure that we can have an operational cafeteria this semester. The space has been cleaned, equipment has been deep cleaned and repaired, and we're in a good position to open shortly. The biggest challenge we have at this time is staffing. Shown here is a slide. These are the positions that are currently open for staffing. We have a supervisor of food services position open and two food service assistants, two food service assistant positions. Recruitment is ongoing, and we hope to have these positions filled ASAP. We also have an interim position hoping to get somebody in there ASAP. This is a slide showing the cafeteria. You can see the place has been deep cleaned, the equipment looks great. We had a preliminary health inspection on March second. It was a good inspection. A couple of items were noted. They wanted an expanded sneeze guard. They also wanted some cove tiling, which we're working on now. The sneeze guard's been ordered. It should be here within about a week and a half, and the cove tiling, our maintenance team will be adding that. So other than that, just some minor additions, including, I believe, a hand sink. This is how the grill area looks. The floor's been freshly painted. Like I said, all the walls have been painted. The area looks really good. That's the sneeze guard right there. You can see it's kind of small. That was already existing, so it'll be good once that's updated. This is the beverage station. It's all ready. It's stocked up, ready to go. There's syrup in the soda fountain there, waiting for students right here. And this is the menu. It's a limited menu at this time, but we have a breakfast offering. We have a grill, burgers, sandwiches, and some sides, and then we're planning on a taco and burrito bar. There are no prices at this time because we haven't ordered food. We don't know the cost of goods yet, but once we have that information, we'll be happy to share that. And next steps here, we'll have a final health inspection once we receive that sneeze guard and get those updates. We'll hire and train staff, and then we'll be ready to order food and serve students. Any questions here?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, I have a couple of questions. When we set the prices for the cafeteria, I'm, this is for the board, I wonder if we could subsidize in the beginning the prices and keep the prices at a reasonable level for students, because I don't know how many students can afford a fifteen-dollar hamburger. So that's something we need, the board needs to work with you on. Also, as far as purchasing food, are we going to accept debit and credit cards?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Brar, I also have a question. When you talked about the positions that we're going to be hiring for this, supervisor for food services, does this job description require any kind of, let's say, completion of a culinary arts school?
It does have a completion of culinary arts that is a requirement there, but we are, we have built in an equivalency. If somebody, for example, has worked in the restaurant industry for ten years or more, and they've managed a large staff, we are allowing that to count as equivalency.
And may we assume that the types of food that we're going to offer during breakfast, lunch, and dinner are all going to be sort of what they call scratch cooking? Not prepackaged?
There will be a combination of, for example, I can tell you, chicken fingers were a popular item, those come frozen, those will be prepared, but for example, meat for burgers, et cetera, and some of those sandwiches, those will be prepared in-house.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you. You know, from the beginning, we mentioned about this, about having our cafeteria back open, and you came through for us, you coming through for us, and I just want to say thank you once again.
Thank you, and thank you to the board for making that happen, and the president.
Mr. Brar, you want to continue with the construction update?
Thank you, Trustee Gaines. We have a presentation for the construction update. There it is. Okay, good evening again. Tonight's update on construction will include active and recently completed projects and will not include those projects that have been completed and previously reported on. These projects being discussed tonight include the outdoor fitness center, Student Services Building, Infrastructure Main Entry, Marauder Complex, Swing Space Two, the gym renovation, Cedar Hall, and the Commons. The outdoor fitness center. Shown here is the lot that was designated for the outdoor fitness center. It's adjacent to the Marauder Complex and behind Marauder Stadium. This project was completed in October of twenty-two. That is how it currently looks. So the project is complete. There have been requests for some shade out there, and we do hope to meet those requests and fulfill those requests, but it's a great space that our athletics teams are currently Next is the Student Services Building. This building is substantially complete. We're working on a punch list. Landscaping is currently in progress, and I'm very happy to announce that we'll have a grand opening on April tenth, twenty twenty-three. Infrastructure Main Entry. This project shifts the main entry This project shifts the main entry of the campus from Avenue K to 30th Street West. The signal is the last remaining piece of this project. That will be operational on April 4th. And then the Marauder complex. This project has been ongoing for quite some time. There have been numerous delays for various reasons. One of the biggest pieces of this project was the MC1 building, which will house a lot of the offices, coach staff. That, I'm very happy to announce that that building has arrived. Those modulators are here. You can see right there the crane setting them in place, and I got several pictures here I'm going to share with you and go through that list here. Shown here is the lot prior to that building being placed. That's how it was placed in sections, and this is how it currently looks, looking at it from the south side. Okay? And that building will be occupied in May. Marauder complex itself will be complete, I believe, in July. Next is Swing Space Two, and Swing Space Two is temporary, or it's space that needed to be renovated and redone for the purpose of the moves. It's a work in progress. It includes the Fine Arts Four building, Mesquite Hall, Yoshida Hall. In Fine Arts Four, we're remodeling five offices and one classroom to create a new photo lab. Photo lab is currently located in the TE1 building, which is set to be demolished. Yoshida Hall transitions the fashion design classrooms into math and engineering lab space. Those are currently in the ME building, and again, that ME building will also be demolished. Those will both be demolished to make room for the Commons. And then Mesquite Hall is where we're going to centralize IT. So IT that's currently in OF2, which is those office buildings where coaches and IT staff were, next to our jet. That building will also be demolished. Those, the remaining IT staff that is there will move into the third floor of Mesquite Hall, so that's that piece of this project. And we expect all of the work on Swing Space Two to be completed by July of '23. The gym renovation. So the gym renovation is funded by both Measure AV and state funding. The state will provide over $12 million of funding for this project. We've implemented a pre-qualification process that's more comprehensive than our previous qualification process. We had two firms pre-qualify, and bids are due on the 16th of this month. We expect this project to be completed in September of... We expect the project to be completed in September of 2024. And Cedar Hall. Cedar Hall will be a three-story, 65,000-square-foot building that'll have instructional space and a new boardroom. It'll sit where the fenced-off area is of the old student services building. The current structure is set to be demolished on March 25th, and the project is scheduled to be completed in March of 2025. Then this is a rendering of the Commons building. The Commons is a 47,000-square-foot building that'll be in the center of campus between the gym and the student services building. It has spaces for student groups, clubs, activities. It'll have a full kitchen and dining area. The building is currently in DSA, and construction is expected to start in October of this year and complete in October of 2025. Looking ahead, we'll have continued construction. With continued construction includes continued inconveniences. So that's something that we are cognizant of, and we're hoping to minimize as much as possible. We look forward to developing a facilities master plan, and that facilities master plan will have sustainability initiatives so that we can continue to do our part for the environment. So that'll be a major focus as we look forward. Facility service plan. Facility service plan. Questions?
Yes, the property to the west of the stadium, that open field, what is their intention there?
To the west of the stadium, that's currently, it was grassed-off area, and it's currently a dirt lot?
Yes.
Yeah, the current plan is to reseed that and have that function again as a grass lot there that can be utilized for soccer and other things.
Mr. Vice President, do any of the buildings on campus, the older buildings, need to be retrofitted?
No, sir.
Mr. Brar, there was some talk of relocating the plane. Has the college decided where the plane is going to be reset or reestablished with all the new construction?
It's, Trustee Gaines, it's been a topic of conversation, but no decision has been finalized at this time.
And if I may, that will be a conversation that is undertaken with the board, and it will be open discussion. I know there's a lot of attachment. It's a wonderful historical artifact, and we're very privileged to be stewards of that. And so there will be a lot of discussion, and we'll figure out the best way to care for that.
Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you, Vice President. Okay, at this time, the board has no report out of closed session. The board will be returning to closed session at the end of the meeting, so no report at this time. All right, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to call 13.16, please.
Can we simply keep that intact and just let it come up for discussion when we do that?
Do you want to go ahead with your concerned discussion?
Yes, Madam President. This is a revision of board policy on budget management, and in that change, it talks about giving authority to the college president on various budget matters. And I'm sorry, we each don't have a hard copy of the board policy, but we did get to review it on the internet. So my concern is that we're giving the college president authority on various areas. I would like to change that revision of board policy to read the college president with the concurrence of the board.
Sir, the board has one employee, which is the college president, and you direct the college president and grant authority, and then I work with campus constituent groups to establish the budget. The budget is brought forward to the board every year for approval, and so it is through the empowerment of the president and the approval of the budget that the board participates in these things.
Well, am I correct that the policy is the college? Is it the way it reads now, the college?
What line are you on, sir?
The line where it gives the college president authority, how does that read right now?
So you're on Board Policy 6250 Budget Management, correct?
The one that you want to revise.
So, and just on the revision of board policies, it's an accreditation, a requirement that board policies are regularly reviewed and updated, and so that's why you're seeing a regular sort of slate of offerings come before you right now. The college is trying to sort of catch up with some policies that are a little overdue for review. So you're seeing these policies as we're trying to be compliant with our accreditation requirements. And so back to your question, it opens by saying the budget shall be managed in accordance with Title V and the California Community College's Budget and Accounting Manual. Budget revisions shall be made only in accordance with these policies and as provided by law. So essentially, this board policy is saying we will comply with the law.
Okay. While we're on the subject, when do we expect to hear about whether we get accreditation?
That, we can take that as a side item. That's not the agenda's topic, sir.
It's a point of information. Do you know what date that we might hear that we did get accredited?
We are having visits next week, and so we won't have a final document until next year, because we have a visit next week, and then there's recommendations that come to us for more feedback, and then in the fall, there will be a site visit, and after that site visit, there's a final document.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, does anyone else have any more discussion on this item?
I do. Oh, thank you, President Gaines. Dr. Zellet, I just wanted to ask, previously, we were following the law and policy, correct? So I think what Trustee Reeves is asking is what is different that is notable for this policy, and if we could address that.
So it's the updating. You can see that if you look at the revised dates, it hadn't been updated for three years, and it's typically a two-year review cycle. In addition, a critical update is in the second paragraph where we had to up our reserve levels to 17% in order to receive emergency funding.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? At this time, I'd like to call in Dr. Davis to do our tenure faculty presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, President Gaines, and the rest of the board of trustees, and the student trustee. Tonight is a terrific night, as you will be voting on granting tenure to 11 of our superstar faculty members. If I could have those members line up right now. As you all know, hiring is the most impactful thing we do at AVC, because these tend to be 20, 30, and 40-year decisions about who interacts with our students on a daily basis. The faculty decisions made at AVC four years ago were superb, which brings us to this delightful night. The second most impactful thing we do is to continue to develop our employees to be the best that they can be. So for our full-time faculty members, the major component of that development is our tenure process, a four-year process. So before we get to the stars tonight, I want to thank the more senior faculty members who served as tenure review chairs and led these committees with fidelity to assist these faculty members' development. I also want to thank our terrific deans, many of which are here tonight, who also serve on these committees. Lastly, we owe debt of gratitude to Tina McDermott, who serves as our tenure review coordinator and keeps all the committees on track with their duties and is a great resource for them. But again, the main purpose of tonight is to present and recognize the terrific work of these 11 faculty members who've been put through their four-year tenure process to become elite instructors and contributors to the AVC mission. So I'm going to call them, say a couple of words, and then if we could have a photo with Board President Gaines and College President Zellet, that would be great. So first is Fritz Hemker, Political Science. Fritz has helped to write and introduce the Law: Public Policy in Society, associate degree for transfer to our campus, and is involved with our Law Scholars Committee. Recently, he helped to host the civic and voter engagement events where we brought House candidates Smith and Garcia to campus. Mr. Hemker brought with him a wealth of experience and knowledge regarding prison instruction, has been one of our most instrumental instructors at the LA County Prison, offering political science courses and AVC Read to Succeeds program to our incarcerated students. Thank you, Fritz. Next, we have Hal Huntsman. Hal's a highly active faculty member and has earned the respect of his colleagues and students alike. He's led a faculty learning group in statistics, serves actively in the Puente Program and in the Academic Senate. His innovative teaching methods in math have served as examples to follow. I became a fan of him before I ever met him because he was a guest on a podcast I listened to about AB 1705. Maria Pichi Calaco, Nursing. Pichi is a passionate nursing instructor who plays a major part in helping our LVMs bridge into the RN program. She goes above and beyond to ensure students receive all of the services they need and that they're prepared for their courses. Next is Travis Lee. Travis, yeah, excuse me. Travis is a welding instructor. He serves as department chair for the trades program. He started at AVC as an instructional assistant and has been a key player in building and growing the program to include setting up the new welding space in the discovery lab, purchasing a new mobile welding trailer, and adding multiple specialties within the welding industry. Thank you, Travis. Next is Kent Mosher from Business. Kent is a tremendous asset to our business and computer applications program at AVC for 20 years, first as an adjunct, then as a full-time faculty, and now as department chair. In 2019 and 2020, Kent created and implemented the BIP program, Business Information Professional, consisting of 22 courses, three certificates, and an AS degree that are available through online-only courses. Kent has served on a variety of committees on campus, including distance ed and technology, academic policies and procedures, faculty professional development, budgeting, guided pathways, and he's currently participating in this year's Faculty Leadership Academy. Patricia Palavicino, Biology. Patricia has done an exceptional job in the Biology Department revising and updating curriculum in botany and environmental science. She works closely with her students both in and out of the classroom. Patricia also collaborates with other community colleges through a National Science Foundation grant to promote field experience as far as students, and she has a big B field trip this weekend and providing more opportunities for our students. Next is Linda Parker, Library Studies. Linda promotes information literacy on our campus in her instructional role and her workshops and reference desk assistance. She is the administrator for our library services platform. She's our archivist, catalogs books, and maintains the library webpages. She is described as a stellar colleague with a tremendous work ethic by her colleagues. Linda Parker. Alinda Parkinson, Nursing. Alinda is a dedicated nursing instructor who leads LVMs to success and encourages them to advance in their careers. She constantly works with her colleagues to develop new strategies for ensuring student success. Alinda Parkinson. Next is Carlos Pinho, Administration of Justice. Carlos has been a force in our Administration of Justice program, starting in 2011 as an adjunct, then as a full-time faculty member, and now also as a department chair. He works closely with our campus safety program and community groups to enhance public safety on and off campus. He organizes our AJ Work Experience Program, giving our students opportunities to work as cadets for the LA Sheriff's Department. He also worked to bring the first Department of Corrections Jump Start Testing offered at any California community college to AVC, which allowed our students direct access to job opportunities in the CDCR. He's been an instructor at AVC's online teacher He's been an instructor at AVC's online teacher training program and was instrumental in offering administrative justice as one of the first fully online majors offered at our campus. Carlos Pinho. Next is Kimberly Smith, Nursing. Kim is an outstanding nursing instructor who really cares for her students and works with them to be independent, confident nurses. She takes pride in using evidence-based practice to teach the students and help them obtain success. Kimberly Smith. Not here tonight, but he still deserves props, so I'll say his deal. Joshua Strong for Math. Josh has been an ultimate team player and colleague for the last four years. His student and peer evaluations have been stellar and prove his commitment to the department and his students. While serving students is his primary focus, Josh is also active in our Honors Committee.
Okay, Board. Action items. 15.1, Approval of Memorandum Between Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, AVC FCE, Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, AVC FT, and Antelope Valley Community College District, AVCCD. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. 15.2, Approval of Superintendent's Organizational Report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 15.3, Approval of Nominations to the California Community College Trustee, CCCT, 2023 Board Election. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Who did we nominate?
We nominated our own Mr. Michael Reeves. And we can turn in up to nine names on this. My recommendation, Board, is that we just vote for our own Michael Reeves. Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of 2023 California Community College Classified Employee of the Year nominee, and we have one public speaker, Ms. Pamela Ford.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Zalat, faculty, staff, and honored guests and students. As an employee of Antelope Valley College, the leader of the Classified Bargaining Unit, and a panelist on the Chancellor's Consultation Council, I am sharing with you tonight that I am in support of both nominees for the California Community College Employee of the Year Award, though I did not submit both nominations. Fannie Carey was one of the nominees. I support Fannie, as she is a good worker, and wherever she works, she makes our entire campus look good. Had I participated in this nomination, I would have, in all fairness, nominated every custodian on this campus, because they are working under difficult circumstances due to years of staffing shortages and increasing square feet due to new buildings on this campus. How do you only select one for this honor? So I'm glad it wasn't me. But I'm happy for her. Jamal Brown. I supported Jamal, because as I read the application, it became clear to me that he met the criteria for the entire application. Due to his excellent work on campus and his years of continuous work with K-12 schools in our community, supporting the Chancellor's goal by serving as a leader beyond the local institution through service in local statewide and or national activities through his college bowl events. The connection Jamal has made to AVC is over and above what he is required to do. And this connection has helped to inspire students to enroll and attend AVC upon graduation from high school. And I think our goal right now, above everything else, is to increase our enrollment, and Jamal is sure doing his part to do that. The work Jamal does has captured the attention of Assemblyman Tom Lackey and also Juan Correa, who award the students, along with Jamal, with a certificate for each event. Jamal further supports the college mission and the Chancellor's mission of DEIA by participating in the A2 Men Program, taking students with him to participate in the events and mentoring and encouraging them to network with the many community college dignitaries that attend this event each year. And what people don't realize is one of the things Jamal does is he takes from his own pocket to help students. There was an incident where a student didn't have a coat, and he went of his own volition and purchased a coat for that student. Jamal also, as quiet as it's kept, and he'll probably have words for me tomorrow, has a collection of belts, so that when he sees our young men walking around sagging, he offers them a belt. And I have to say, I agree with him 110%. Jamal is a very inspirational individual to the 400-plus students he serves who participate in the college bowl event each year. And next year, I hope to see some of the board members there in support of Jamal, and I plan to be there myself. Again, I support both individuals nominated for this award. In the future, I would ask that the nominating process be sent to the Classified Bargaining Unit, so that we can reach out to our members and seek nominations of individuals who truly meet the Chancellor's criteria for this award, so that we can ensure that candidates meet all of the criteria, and so we're not competing against one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Okay. 15.4, Approval of 2023 California Community College Classified Employee of the Year nomination. And Board members, we need to select one between Fannie Carey or Jamal Brown. Do I have a motion?
Move approval of 15.4, with the nominee being Jamal Brown.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I do want to add that, yes, I do support Jamal Brown. I don't know the other lady, but I'm pretty sure she's phenomenal as well. But I've actually had personal contact with Jamal. He's been phenomenal to me. He's looked out. He helped me with my scholarship. He wrote me letter of recommendations. Like, he does stuff outside of his job. Like, it's not even his job. I should be going to my teachers for stuff like that, but he's really there for us, the students. So definitely, thank y'all for supporting him.
Any other nominations or motions? So if not, we will proceed with our nomination being Jamal Brown. Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And our nominee will be Jamal Brown. 15.5, Approval of Achieving the Dream Three-Year Agreement for Coaching Services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 15.6, Approval of the Substantive Change Report to the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges, ACCJC, for the Baccalaureate of Science Degree in Respiratory Care. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I read about this in our notes. We took a survey of 54 people, and 40 people responded and said that they would like to this program to get a BS degree. Is this going to be substantial enough to support getting accreditation to offer a Bachelor of Science degree when we only have 40 students that are interested?
That number is sufficient. The cohort is smaller. It's indicative of an interest level, and that's only one piece of evidence in the sub-change report that indicates both support from the campus and the desire for the program itself.
Thank you.
Okay. Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
15.7, Approval of Agreement Between Antelope Valley Community College District, AVCCD, and Liebert Cassidy Whitmore, LCW, for Legal Representation Services, 2023, 2024, for legal services pertaining to employment relations matters. And we have one speaker, one public comment card. Ms. Ford, we'll call you back to the podium.
Board members, I come before you tonight a bit confused, and that doesn't often happen for me. For in negotiations, we're giving the reasoning that the district has to watch its purse strings because money is tight, and so that's why they tend to be very conservative when it comes to having conversations about salary and benefits increases. During budget committee meetings, there's a discussion about a possible downturn, which is supposed to legitimize the reason for the increase in the reserve. Then, in the agenda, I learned that we're entering yet another contract with another legal firm, Liebert Cassidy and Whitmore, a legal firm for the purpose of employee relations, which I thought is why we hired the interim vice president of Human Resources. And in interesting fact, I learned that quite recently that this firm was used by her previous employer at her last district. The reason for my concern is the contract with Atkinson, Adelson, Lova, Rude, and Romo is costing us, as of December 20th, 2022, to the tune of $1,434 and $56.29. And we received that information from the district. So I have that right here, if you'd like to have it. And we have, in recent months, extended the contract for investigators. Now, I'm not your budget person. I don't even pretend to be. But I calculated the totals for just one time, the list of the expenses or the list of those who might possibly be serving us through Liebert Cassidy, and just using one time of these services listed without hours. Well, no, using three hours. The total is $1,690, and then times three hours, that makes that $5,070. And that's just three hours. I have to ask why. The justification for in-house legal counsel was that this position was going to mitigate some of our legal costs and help us to address some of the internal employee relations issues. In addition to this, HR and legal counsel were supposed to work together. What happened? Are we to assume that each time an interim is hired for HR, that we're going to have to hire to have their preferred outside legal counsel hired? How can this be beneficial to district finances? Are there recent legal challenges that have been won by the district with all of these legal contracts? Instead, why not utilize the benefit of the legal counsel you already have, as we have a new leadership and a better way of doing business? Full disclosure, seeing this action item makes it difficult for me to believe that we're being dealt with openly, honestly, and in good faith in negotiations, when the district is claiming they may be facing a budget shortfall and continued spending on legal counsel.
Ms. Ford, if you're able to wrap up?
I'm wrapping. I'm wrapping. Thanks, Bridget. Wouldn't it be better guidance to rely on legal counsel already under contract? If they don't work out, cancel the contract and then hire a new firm after their contract is up. Secondly, I'm talking about the external legal counsel we currently have. Secondly, limit your exposure to litigation by simply following the rules and providing effective training to all management. In conclusion, I'm asking the Board of Trustees not to enter into this contract with Liebert Cassidy and Whitmore until the other contract expires. Also, I'm requesting from the district a detailed written explanation as to why the district is entering into this contract and not fully utilizing the legal counsel they already have. And I'm requesting a detailed copy of the schedule of fees and costs for Liebert Cassidy and Whitmore, and what services they can provide that the other firms or in-house legal counsel cannot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Do I have a motion for 15.7?
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I agree with Ms. Ford and some of her remarks. I think this is really getting out of hand for legal expenses, but you know, that's a sign of the times, lawsuits. Anybody can file a lawsuit, and if you're a government body, you're going to get a lawsuit. With the expense over a million bucks for a lawyer, the Board might want to consider in the future hiring another lawyer to help Ms. Cook rather than contract out. Another thing that concerns me about this contracting out, who recommends these people to us? And do the people that recommend these law firms get a cut? Now, that's how it works sometimes. If you recommend a law firm, or they recommend a law firm, somebody gets a cut. Not only the law firm gets paid, but the person that recommended them got it. That's my concern on hiring all these lawyers. So in essence, if Ms. Cook needs assistance, maybe we could hire another attorney rather than paying a law firm a million dollars. Thank you.
Board Chair Gaines, may I address this issue? Thank you. So one of Ms. Ford's closing statements is actually one of the reasons we're entering into this contract. Liebert Cassidy Whitmore, part of belonging to their group, is full access to the suite of trainings, which is a different kind of arrangement than what we have with AALRR. So one of the reasons that we want to access this is to provide the onboarding and training that we're not equipped to do right now. And that training, not just for administrators, but also for faculty and classified professionals that help everyone do their job better. Everything from ethics training, which clearly, Trustee Reeves, you were addressing in a roundabout way, all of those things are made available to the entire campus through this. There's not a desire to have a bloated legal line item. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying, at this point in time, as we settle into, as we make our hires and complete our team, we're trying to find ways to ensure that everyone has not only the support they need, but the access to training and things like that that they need as well.
Any more discussion? Advice?
I approve.
Did I miss something?
So for the benefit of the interpreter, Ms. Ford had a follow-up question, asking if AALRR also offers those kinds of trainings. And the answer is they do, but you purchase them, as opposed to having access to a suite of trainings. So it's like buying modules.
All right. Board, all those in favor?
No.
No. That was a three to two vote. Okay, board. Fifteen point nine, approval of memorandum of understanding between Antelope Valley College and the Antelope Valley Union High School District. Do I have a motion? I missed fifteen point eight? I'm sorry. I'll go back. Fifteen point eight, approval of academic policies and procedures, AP committees' recommendation of course listings. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point nine, approval of memorandum of understanding, MOU, between Antelope Valley College and the Antelope Valley Union High School District. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point ten, approval of lecturer agreement with Dr. Myron Roll, contract for speaking at a Read to Succeed event on April twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. The price for this lecture is thirty thousand dollars. Does that go to the gentleman or the woman that's going to speak, or is that for the whole event?
Yes, to both. This, this is a follow-up contract to the presentation that the board received maybe two board meetings ago. Dr. Marina Katabayo spoke about the Read to Succeed project, and she referred to the fact that we were bringing the author to campus so that all of the campus could then meet the author and share in what they had learned through their reading program.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I did some research on this guy, and I think he will be a good asset on this campus. I feel like he would bring, if we could get the students to go to this event, you know, and faculty and staff, as it mentioned in the contract, everybody's welcome. If we could get a good turnout, I think he could bring, like, a certain type of leadership, asset value to our campus. So, I support this. Maybe the price, you know, a little steep, but I did look at his prices. It's between thirty and fifty thousand, so we got the cheapest price that he offers.
Ms. Harvey, did you have some discussion?
Well, basically, it was covered by Dr. Zalit. I was going to say we were given a book, and I have begun to read that book. It's very interesting, and so is this gentleman. So, I'm glad to see that he's actually coming.
Okay, thank you. Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point eleven, approval to ratify the agreement for marketing services with Vision Point Marketing LLC. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fifteen point twelve, approval of destruction of documents, class two optional and class three disposable. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point thirteen, approval of loss control service agreement with Keenan and Associates for hazardous materials inventory, HMI. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point fourteen, approval of amendment number one to the current five-year agreement with Illumen Incorporated. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second. Any? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point fifteen, approval to utilize the round, the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with TechSmith for the purchase of screen capture software and solutions. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice? All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point sixteen, approval to purchase service for sixty hotspots from T-Mobile for the student computer loan program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point seventeen, approval to extend the use of the NASPO Value Point Cooperative Agreement with VWR International LLC through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point eighteen, approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community Colleges Piggyback Agreement with Illusian Company LP for the purchase of software, services, and software support services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point nineteen, approval of field contract for services with Montgomery Hardware Company for door access controls upgrade project number twenty-two dash zero zero seven with scheduled maintenance funds. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion?
Approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point twenty, project assignment amendment with Management Group Incorporated Compliance Services Library and Child Development Center Roof Repair, number twenty-two dash zero one zero with scheduled maintenance funds. Do I have a motion?
Moved. Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
Approve.
Aye.
Twenty-one, approval of project assignment amendment with Coming Management Group Incorporated for Labor Compliance Services Library and Mesquite Hall Elevator Upgrade, number twenty-two dash zero one one with scheduled maintenance funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen, Board members, fifteen point twenty-two through fifteen point twenty-seven all deal with expenditures from the HERF funds. I'd like to get one motion chunking fifteen point twenty-two to fifteen point twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Yes, Madam President. Now, are the funds we're talking about, the COVID funds, the residue from the COVID funds, Madam President?
It's the higher education emergency relief funds. Correct.
So, I mean, we have done a lot of things with those funds. We've taken trees out and bought things, and did we get permission for each individual job that we wanted to use those funds for?
We are careful about making sure with our external auditors, and, and if there's doubt, we check with our, the federal government to make sure that we are spending accordingly.
How much do we have left, do you know?
I do not know that figure off the top of my head, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have a question. I just wanted to know if it was appropriate to group all those together when we have general funds and COVID recovery block grant that would not be HERF funds?
I believe all of those are with the HERF funds. Corey, can you tell me which one that you see as general fund?
Fifteen point twenty-seven, it says with HERF and general funds. So, I was just thinking, would that be a separate motion?
It's up to the board to take that one. Thank you for pointing that out, Corey. It's up to the board to take that, how they choose.
Corey, the board, to move things along, has a bunch of things that are related together. And so, that's why we have this whole bunch of different things bunched together like that. That's something that we started because we were going through all of these things, and some of them are related, and we're getting redundant and not necessary.
That said, Corey, good catch. We'll make sure that we catch, we'll look for that next time. Okay, advice, Corey?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fifteen point twenty-eight to fifteen thirty. Again, I would like to chunk the three of these, the funds. So, do I have a motion to?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Action items, sixteen point one, twenty twenty-two, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, LASD, crime report on Antelope Valley College campus, and crime report is in your packet, Board members, for your review. Okay, reports and announcements. At this time, I'd like to call on Academic Senate, Tamira Palmetto de Spain.
Good evening, Madam President and the board. I don't have much to report. We're actually doing a whole lot of work this week, so I'll have a whole bunch to tell you next time. Just congratulations to all of our newly tenured faculty, and we will keep you appraised. Our Faculty Recognition Day is right around the corner, so when we have a date, I'll go ahead and send that out to you and hope that you all can join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Jason Bowen. Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Patricia McClure, Bridgette Cook. First, congratulations to all of the faculty who received tenure tonight. It is, this is the greatest job I've ever had. Antelope Valley College is a great place to work. It's one of the few dreams come true in my life where the, the dream achieving it actually exceeded the hype. This is not always true in many areas of life where dreams come true. Marriage might be, maybe one of those. Depends. But, but anyway, sorry. The, so, now, even, so it is the greatest place I've ever worked in my life. That doesn't mean there aren't challenges, just as there are challenges in marriage and family and so on. Where the faculty union has an issue with the college is mostly in situations where we perceive violations of process, contract, et cetera. However, there are situations where even there are outcomes that, you know, blow my mind, to, to, to say the least. We had a situation where President Zalit, I don't, situation might not be appropriate term. She had, she wanted, she proposed a change to the block schedule with the goal being increasing enrollments and FTS. And as we interpret the process, what the process requires according to board policy and the contract, faculty contract, is that constituent input is obtained that goes to the calendar committee. The calendar committee provides a recommendation to the president, then the president negotiates with the union, signs an MOU. And in that process, we've had differences of opinion, differences of interpretation, yet in the end, we came together and signed this MOU. And I just want to say thank you, President Zalit, for that. This is a major change. I don't know if everyone appreciates what's just occurred here. This is something that we've not, we're not used to experiencing, to say the least. And, and I want to give President Zalit credit in that despite her differences of interpretation, and we've had these discussions, the end result that we still, is that we still came together and achieved this MOU. And that, that's a sit, you know, I think in all relationships, when there can be disagreements, and yet when you can work it out and come together, those are the best situations that can occur. Progress is made, optimism occurs, and then there's just hope that the future will be better. Now, so, I just wanted to highlight that and, and not take away anything from that. That's pretty amazing. Going forward, what the Federation would like, now, there's this mantra that's repeated, which we love, which is be kind. So, we, we actually say that, we'll say that to each other. Let's see, faculty member, be kind. So, this is President Zalit started that. With regards to faculty discipline, we would like that to also apply, be kind. You know, there's different, you know, philosophies regarding discipline. One is, is it punitive, is it, or corrective and rehabilitative? There are, it depends on the situation. In many situations, I would argue that the goal should be that discipline is corrective. And what we have to, to sort of, okay, so we have be kind on one hand, which is a philosophy, it's optional, but then, on the other hand, we have processes in place that help protect against, say, capricious application of the law, and that is due process. So, I just want to read from the faculty contract, the first step in faculty discipline. "The supervisor will meet with the unit member for discussion of the problem, review of the substantiating evidence, and to inform the unit member that continuance of the unacceptable behavior will result in further action." In summary, what that states is if there's misconduct observed, whether the faculty intentionally is, is misbehaving or not, the first step in the due process is a warning, literally, a warning. And the reason for that is the faculty member should be given the opportunity to correct the behavior, because I'm aware of situations where the faculty member believes that what they're doing is actually correct, and it turns out that in those situ, in that situation, the, there's behavior that was acceptable in prior administrations, and so now this behavior is, is not acceptable. That's fine. I under, laws change, there's AB five, which went into effect January first, twenty twenty, which classify, reclassify contract workers as employees if they meet certain stipulations. So, I just would like to encourage the college, the district, to assume the best and be more corrective, or approach discipline with a corrective philosophy rather than a punitive philosophy. And then I think that that'd go a long way. It requires trust, but even in the absence of trust, we still have the written law, which, you know, is there to protect us. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Ms. Pamela Ford.
Go ahead. Oh, okay. I just want to say that I am very appreciative to Dr. Zalit and also to Jason Bowen for working, for the three of us working together and collaborating and signing off on the MOU. It, it was a lot of work, and we didn't always agree on everything, but we worked collegially and cooperatively, and we got it done, and in a short space of time, I might add. I also would like to thank the calendar committee as well as Dr. Zalit and Dr. Bowen, because we managed to get past, which some, which is something that classified have been bringing forward for years. I know I have, ever since I became president, and that is to honor, recognize, and observe Cesar Chavez Day. I think that's very important, and I'm glad that we've finally gotten there. I also want to congratulate both Jamal Brown and Fannie Carey for being nominated for the Chancellor's Classified Employee of the Year Award. And also, I would like to congratulate all the faculty that were tenured this evening. That's such an honor. I attended the A2Mend, or rather, I was invited to attend the A2Mend conference, something I've never done before. And the majority who attended were administrators and staff from community college systems. Daisy Gonzalez, the chancellor, attended. Jamal Brown and Golden Hicks were also in attendance. And I just attendance. And I just want, they're classified employees, and I was very moved by the collaboration that took place at this event, the networking that occurred, along with the, the networking that the students got to do, and to see people in power working together, and the presentations that were put on. But I was disheartened about one thing, is that we didn't have one administrator from Antelope Valley College. And I think that if we're truly invested in DEIA, the next year, we should be there, and I think board members should be there as well. So, and I'm looking forward to participating again. Okay, can't read my own writing. Also, classified would like to see negotiations get resolved. They are rather annoyed and sore and cranky with me because it's not moving fast enough. So I understand their concern, and I understand their angst, because, as you know, even eggs are off the chart now, as far as costs. And so we really need to get settled salaries and benefits, so that, because these increasing in costs and benefits, in gas, living expenses, fuel to heat your home is just off the chart, and classified are the lowest paid on the campus. But we work. We work whether we're told to or not. We support our students. I think the most, the best thing about the Student Services Building is you get to see all day long classified in action. Students in front of them, they're doing everything they can to make sure that our students get what they need. But we, we're not working for free, and we need to get our salaries and benefits adjusted, at least so we can have a livable wage. So I ask that we get moving with that, and thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. 17.4 Confidential Management Supervisory Administrator Employees, Ms. Michelle Hernandez. ASO, Diana Ferrasoli.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So currently, right now, ASO is working on elections. Elections are coming up for next school year. We also participated in the Student Success Conference, and we set up tables out there and brought a couple of clubs to encourage some of the high school students to join the student government, student government, and the importance and the effect that we have here on campus as students. Also, this upcoming weekend, we're going to be attending the National Student Advocacy Conference out in Washington, DC. They were going to be discussing Higher Education Reauthorization Act, the Pell Grant, an increase of Pell Grant, and then also the Dream Act of 2023. Additionally, ASO is also working on art competition. We're the Hora Cultural Building. The walls are pretty empty, so we wanted to bring more awareness to sexual, sexual assault awareness is in April, so we wanted to bring awareness to that as well, and also have students leave a little piece of themselves here on campus. And that's all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Foundation, Diane Knippel.
Good evening, Board. It's that time of year, so we've been working hard to help students. We're going to be giving over 200 students scholarships this year totaling a little over $234,000. So yay. I want to specifically thank my staff member, Emily Moulton, who single-handedly runs that program, and it is a very tough program to manage and work. We also had 85, a little over 85, community and internal ABC folks reading the scholarships this year. It's like the largest number we've ever had. So I want to say thanks to the community, and thanks to those of you that have been supporting as well. We'll recognize, then, the donors and the students together at the Meet and Greet, April 21. Your invitations have already been sent out to you, so hope to see you there. Breakfast is loud and rowdy. We anticipate about 300 attendees, and the whole purpose is to try and develop mentor relationships between the student and the donor. So it's been successful. We've had to close it down because of COVID, but now we're back again. So yay. And then following that weekend, on the 29th, is our annual fundraiser, the Wine Walk. So sell tickets often. They're $100 apiece. All monies go to the Antelope Valley Students Community Endowment, which is the program that funds our faculty grant program. So we're going to be having it this year for the first time, not outside. Yay. We can stay nice and warm in the new Student Services Building. So if you have any questions about the two programs, just give me a call. I do want to also support Lisa O'Leary in my office, who, again, is single-handedly running the Wine Walk setup and get started. So we already have about 15 wineries signed, beer and non-alcoholic as well. So we're ready to go. Thank you. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Office of the Superintendent President, Dr. Jennifer Zellet.
Good evening, trustees and student trustee. Welcome to Week Nine of Instruction for Spring Semester 2023 and to the celebration of Women's History Month. This month gives us the occasion to celebrate the phenomenal women of Antelope Valley College, and I would like to start by thanking our courageous Women Board of Trustee members, Board President Barbara Gaines and trustee Michelle Harvey. Being a trustee is not an easy task, and both of you strong women are educators at heart, bringing all of your expertise to this college. Thank you. Several of us traveled down below today. I learned a new word. When you live here, you say down below. When you go to LA, traveled down below today to celebrate another of Antelope Valley College's phenomenal women, Dr. Jill Zimmerman. Dr. Zimmerman was chosen by Supervisor Catherine Barker as LA County's Fifth District Woman of the Year for her work not only on campus but off campus in the community. What a privilege it is to serve alongside her, knowing that every day she brings this heart and dedication to the students of ABC. Throughout our campus, we have strong women leadership as well, in the AVCFCE, in the Academic Senate, in the AVC, the letters, the Faculty Union as well, and also in administration. I would like to acknowledge the trailblazing done by these women. Leading from the middle is a difficult thing, and they do it with style. There are several Women's History Month events on and off campus, and I encourage you all to participate and celebrate. I have a few legislative updates I'd like to share. ABC is proactively working to expand institutional offerings and services, and I would like to offer these legislative updates to inform these efforts. The Bachelor Degree Program, the chancellor's office is in the process of selecting the next cohort of colleges who will be allowed to offer bachelor programs. To my knowledge, there are 29 applications at the moment, and 10 colleges will be selected. We should know soon about the sex of, success of our application. Two budget updates. The state budget is going to be delayed. For as many of you are aware, the IRS has extended the tax reporting period into October 10. This means that the May revise for our state budget will have little meaningful updates, for there will not be inadequate information about tax revenues after the typical April deadline. The California Legislature is looking for many potential ways to balance the budget, some of which may have significant impact on college planning, which leads me to point three. Student housing grant application. When you look to this, there's some hot links so that you all can follow some of these trails. As just mentioned, the state is looking for many ways to balance the budget, and one suggestion from the Legislative Analyst Office is to table or delay the student housing grant applications until next year, with the potential of still allowing the revolving grant applications for CSUs and UCs. This is not a favorable solution, and I've been in communication already with people in Sacramento, offering our point of view on this solution, and I will continue advocating for the college with our local representatives. In fact, today I spoke to four of them, saying I want an appointment, and I hope that the grants will move forward as planned. AB 928, put forward by Berman, is directed to establish a singular lower division transfer pathway to the UCs and CSUs. This has been very contentious as it's being, it's in the implementation phase. The Intersegmental Committee of the Academic Senates, so the academic senates from community colleges, from the UCs and the CSUs, have been directed to work out the details by the end of May. So looking at a new common transfer pathway. If they don't work things out by the end of May, it will be handed over to the administrators from each system to work this out. The challenge with Cal Getzi, which is what they're calling this, is that it proposes to eliminate Area E from the transfer pattern. That area includes many of our supplemental learning courses, kinesiology and health courses, and athletics courses, lifelong learning. And that's a significant portion of the community college mission. I will be sharing how to advocate with our representatives and with the author of the bill in order to ensure that our programming and supports to students do not suffer inadvertently. Many boards in our system have passed resolutions to support maintaining Area E and to ensure careful implementation of the bill. I would like to work with the Board President Gaines to draft a resolution for the consideration of our Board of Trustees next month. This Wednesday, we welcome the Vice President of Student Services, Adania Reyes, to our campus, and we are looking forward to the team coming together in strength and vision, and we look forward to the leadership she will bring. We continue to work on ABC Serves, our strategic plan that integrates all of our service plans for the institution, and we know that this effort will simplify and detail our course of work for the next three years. This week, our visiting accreditation team will join us virtually for several town halls and meetings. The links for registering for the Zoom meetings have been sent, and if you've missed these registrations, please contact my office. Accreditation is a chance for us to be coached by peers and colleagues through the ACCJC standards, and if we are in need of some repair in certain areas or systems, we will do the good work needed to meet and exceed expectations, all for the sake of our students. Remember, we are here to serve students and be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zellet. Mens.
Yes, I just want to start, I wish I would have copped them before they left, but I want to congratulate all the professors that got tenure. I know I had a couple of them in my class, or I was in their class, actually. But I just want to say, ABC has some really great professors here, and of course, administration and classified staffs. But, you know, for me, it's a personal experience with the professors, and I feel like I'm more advanced than a lot of my coworkers. I know it takes experience to get in the field and gain this knowledge, but I feel like this school is, you know, giving us those skills ahead of our time, you know. So when I'm already in the field, I'm way more advanced. I know more about political by taking Mr. Hemphrood's class, know more about biology from taking Dr. Salam and Mr. Rainbow. Like, I know so much more than my coworkers, just put it like that. So I appreciate ABC. I'm gonna be a marauder for life, you know, when I graduate. You know, I only got one more month, and then, yeah, and I'm gonna miss you guys. But, and other than that, yeah, that's all I got, you know. Just be kind, serve students, and, you know, classified staff, I do hope to see them get raises. You know, they've been up here multiple times asking for raises. The young woman that used to come up here a lot, you know, and I would like to see them, you know, get their fair share. And yeah, and I just welcome everybody, the new president, the new vice president, and yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Buffalo.
Just love pushing this button. I don't know how you got through it, Barbara. Hopefully that'll be corrected by the next meeting. Basically, congratulations to Dr. Jill Zimmerman for her honor. She's been a terrific advocate for students and lost animals and things like that in the community, but she's done an incredible job, and I know some great stories about Jill going way back, that would amaze people, her commitment to the students and to their families. And she does an incredible job. We need more people like Jill. Basically, the Wine Walk, yeah, I'll take two tickets. Sounds good. The person who brought up the Gatorade issue at the last meeting, I don't recall who that was. Was that you, I said? Yes, I checked in on that. That's accurate. We need to resolve that. I didn't see it as an equity issue. I saw it as a common sense issue. So we need to get that resolved. And congratulations to our tenured faculty now. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves.
First of all, congratulations to all the professors tonight. Thank you very much for teaching. I want to thank the board for nominating me for the state community college board. There are 21 people on that board, and it would be an honor to represent ABC on the board. And everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Mr. Adams.
I would also like to congratulate Jill Zimmerman on that award. I've known her for a number of years, and yes, she is a great advocate for students and for lost animals. So she's a great asset to both the college and the community. Congratulations to all the newly tenured faculty, and that includes all those who completed year one, two, and three of the tenure process, because I know that's part of the whole process. It takes four years, and it's an ongoing process. So congratulations to all those who have reached that milestone, whatever it happens to be. And yes, I do have Wine Walk tickets. And please, before you decide to buy from anyone else, including any other board members or the president of the college or anyone else, please consider me. And if, for instance, the faculty union was going to consider buying like a block of eight or 10 tickets to maybe raffle off to various faculty members as a, as an incentive to go to the Wine Walk, and especially because the Wine Walk proceeds go to faculty grants, I would hope that the faculty union would come to me first.
Ms. Harvey.
Yes, I would like to congratulate the tenured faculty. There is nothing more noble than teaching. Last month, we approved a contract management system. We are really hopeful that this will catch redundancies and usages of services. It's hard to hurt you. So we are keeping our eyes on that, even legal. So we are taking our obligations seriously, and we would like to thank those who step up to the podium to note those types of things. Also, I would like to say congratulations to Dr. Jill Zimmerman, also to Jamal for his nomination, but not to leave out Ms. Fannie Carey. To be even nominated for that type of recognition is very important. And so I'm very happy that Jamal is well-known. He represents the college well, and congratulations to him. But I want Ms. Carey to know that her work has not gone unnoticed by the board also. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Buffalo, regardless of what you heard from Mr. Adams, I too have tickets right here with me, and have a little pity for me, because I've only sold one. That's mine. So if you need two, just get out your checkbook and I'll take a check. He probably will not take a check. I will. Okay, I want to congratulate the, our new tenured teachers. I've said it for many, many years, some of the best instructors, Corey, you'll be like me, sort of, even though I, I have not been a student here for many, many years, I am still here. So yes, you always, service is a great thing to consider when you, when you graduate and want to come back. So, but I've always said that some of the best instructors I ever had were right here on this campus. And I will never forget the, I still remember their names. Many of them are no longer here, but I think there might be a couple of them still here. Isn't that odd? I too want to congratulate Dr. Zimmerman for her outstanding recognition by Supervisor Barker. That's a very elite field that she was nominated in, and so kudos to her. And I just want to say that the board will be going back into closed session. I'm not really sure for how long at this point in time. So if you want to stay, you can stay. If not, we will return at some point. Thank you. If not, we will return at some point. Thank you.
We're going to reconvene at 9:24. Report out of closed session, 4.3, consideration of public employee discipline, dismissal, release of employee pursuant to government code section 5495 slash 57. On a motion made by Michael Adams and seconded by Michelle Harvey with a 5-0 vote, the board approved the non-renewal of an educational administrator. 4.4, consideration of claim, government code section 54656.95. On a motion made by Michael Adams and seconded by Steve Buffalo with a 5-0 vote, the board approved the settlement agreement and general release between Anlot Valley Community College District and James Gray. Our next meeting will be April 10th in the Palmdale Center. Meeting is adjourned. 9:25.